Want to take a quick look and see how it's come out. Um, that way- Alright, everybody's had a chance to take a look, we'll get started. For those of you that don't know, I'm Jeremy Smith, I'm the City General Manager. Um, just wanted to give a brief overview as to how we've gotten to this point. And from what I understand, some of you were a part of this from the very beginning. So, in 2012, the city received grant funding through the Federal Highway Administration to put together the Bicycle Master Plan. Uh, the Bicycle Master Plan was broken into two sections. Intra-city connections and then the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail. And we're here today to talk about the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail connection from Fourth Street to 23rd Street. So in 2013, after receiving the funding, the City of Water believe, um, signed an agreement with Alta Engineering who put together the Bicycle Master Plan. Within that, there were two, um, public meetings to go through the information, get public input into this. Uh, they were held in May and October. And in 2000, in December of 2013, the Bicycle Master Plan was finalized by Alta, presented to the City Council and adopted in January of 2014. At that point, uh, the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail was broken into two sections. The short-term alternative and the long-term alternative. We are here today to talk about the short-term alternative, um, which is on the west side of 787 or within the city, not along the river. That is the long-term alternative for the bike path. Uh, in 2015, we applied through the Capital District Transportation Committee to the Department of Transportation for funding for this project. At that time, we received roughly $600,000 in funding. The project was set to be, uh, 2018-19 project. So in 2018, we went out for proposals for a consulting engineer to, uh, prepare the project. Barton and Le Judas were the winners of that proposal and we have signed an agreement with them. They were tasked with putting together the preliminary and final design for the short-term alternative. So that's how we've gotten to here today. This is the final design for the short-term alternative, which is within the city. And, um, they have Dan, Pete and Tom who are here today from Barton and Le Judas and they're, they're going to present, uh, what they've come up with and again, the final design. If you have any questions throughout, feel free to ask, um, and of course, at the end, uh, any further questions that you might have, so. With that said, I'm gonna turn it over, uh, to Dan from Barton and Le Judas and he can walk you through.
Yeah, uh, so there's a few items that we're gonna go through. Um, gonna kind of go overview of the project a little more than what Jeremy just provided you and, um, go over what, some elements of our design. And we're really here to kind of get some input from you and answer your questions. So throughout, you can ask questions or afterwards, if you want to grab one of us and we'll go up to someplace on the map and answer anything that you have. Um, the project team, obviously the City of Water believe, project sponsor, um, the New York State Department of Transportation, they administer the funding for this project. Um, Barton and Le Judas were the engineers, um, obviously the, the local community. And FHWA, that's Federal Highway Administration, they administer the funding and they set the standards for what our design will be. Um, so Jeremy already touched on this, this is where this project stemmed from, uh, Bicycle Master Plan. We are moving ahead with the short-term alternative. Sorry, guys. Hello, one sec. Um, alright, so the funding, Jeremy said we started out with $600,000 roughly. Um, we, uh, we were able to work with New York State Department of Transportation and Capital District Transportation Council to try and find a way to provide some more funding. Um, the $600,000 was about half of what we really needed to complete the project for how it was sculpted to be. So, um, just a couple of weeks ago, we were able to go present to the committee and we were able to increase that funding to the 1.32 million. And, uh, it's kind of broken out here so you can see where that money actually comes from. Eighty percent comes from federal sources, uh, fifteen percent from New York State and then five percent of that total money comes from, uh, the city. Um, and the objectives of the project, what we were tasked with completing here, um, complete a 1.85 mile extension of the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail from Fourth Street to Hudson Shores Park, um, and provide a safe, efficient, uh, multimodal facility separate from vehicle travel. And what we're gonna do with our next couple of slides, we've kind of broken out the project into some segments and, um, Pete and I are gonna just go through some of the details of the design in these areas. So the first area, Fourth Street to about Sixth Street, we're gonna pick up from the existing Mohawk Bike Hike Trail, cross under 787. That existing, uh, culvert overpass is gonna stay the same. We're gonna go up Fourth Street and then continue down on Sixth. So we first looked at trying to fit in some infrastructure for to accommodate bikes. And when we did that, it cut into parking. So we backed off from that a little bit to maintain parking on, on the west side of Fourth Street, um, Broadway. So we've got an existing, or maintain an eight-foot wide parking lane, two ten-foot wide travelings, and we're gonna have a buffer in between the, this travel lane and the new bicycle path. So that's gonna be off-road, um, within this segment. So once we get to Sixth Street- Um, I just wanna point out, in this area here, this, this is one of the main areas where we came up with this design, where we said, this is where you're gonna blow that original $600,000 budget, um, because that budget included staying within this curve line. So right here and right here, which in order to make that happen, would be eliminating parking all through this stretch, which the city was pretty clear that's not going to happen. So this was one of the reasons why we had to go ahead and make that extra step of trying to find some extra money here.
I got a question.
Yes?
So where are the parked cars gonna be, where the bicycles are?
Against the curb? The park right here, this parking lane right here will remain.
So what about parking on the east side of Second Avenue?
Parking on the east side here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's in this stretch is, um, eliminated with this.
Oh, true.
On this side, not on the residential side, no.
Okay.
So to clarify, the, the original plan that was done in the Bicycle Master Plan would have eliminated parking on both sides of the street to be able to have that. So this, this takes it away on the east side of Broadway, uh, just between the Fourth Street tunnel until you actually get to Passinos, because at that point, there's no parking on that side of the street anywhere. So it's about a, a one-block area from Fourth to Fifth. Sir, do you have a question?
That's where the grassy area is now, right? Where, where the old pump used to be?
Yes.
It used to be-
The old incinerator, right?
Right, yeah. Continuing on from Sixth Street to about Eighth Street, we're gonna go off-road. So existing parking will be maintained in this area on both sides. Our trail was gonna stay within the existing city's highway boundary, which is shown here by this, I don't know if you can quite see it with this black line, it's the existing fence that separates 787 and, and the city's highway boundary. So this alignment is gonna meander through the existing trees there, we're gonna try to avoid those and just have a, like I said, a meandering route. Uh, as we get closer to Eighth, it's gonna get closer, the trail is gonna move back closer to the road, we're gonna have an offset of about three feet. That's it? Yeah. And change area here. So from Eighth Street to the Arsenal, so this is the section that I'm, as we get, um, in this area, the, the highway boundary is a little tighter. So to avoid right-of-way impacts, uh, to 787, uh, we are moving the trail a little closer to the road. But the, uh, parking is going to remain the same in this area as well.
Right, and that fence is not barbed wire, just because there's a little like this on there, so you see that? Although it was thought about.
Question, Porter?
Yep.
The area is where the bike path meets the road, runs alongside the road, not, like, not what you just showed is where it's off-road. What separates the bike path from the road?
So, um, we'll go back to our first segment here?
Yeah, exactly.
So there, yeah, the, the road is the same elevation as the bike paths, so there's a five-foot separation, um, with striping, a hatch striping area.
So there's no physical barriers?
No physical barrier, no.
Have you thought about a physical barrier? Because I saw earlier, in South Troy-
Yes.
They have a long, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, what do they call it, the up alley?
They're, they're posts.
Yeah, posts, they're kinda, just so that the driver has that in his eye.
Yep. We, uh, we talked about tubular markers, which I believe is the Troy section, which, uh, they're kind of a maintenance nightmare, which is what we talked about internally here in Troy City.
How rarely is it a nightmare?
Troy has actually removed a lot of theirs. Um, with car driving and with plowing, they've taken down a lot of the candlesticks that are up there. We're talking about the-
Yeah.
The three-foot-high candlesticks. They end up getting taken down by the plows or by the push snow as it gets to there. Uh, so it makes it difficult to maintain it when it's on road level. Without having that, our plows would be able to plow right through that and keep it off to the side.
They said the same thing about the bump offs on Nineteenth Street.
Did.
The bump offs are still there and it's empty, yeah. What I'm just saying, you know, for a person who drives that all the time, that is the most dangerous spot going north. You pretty much take your license in your hands and coming that way.
Okay.
And not to have some, at least in a driver's eye, is, I would think, you didn't, they're not gonna stop for white paint. That's not gonna slow anybody down.
Right, the purpose of the separation is a visual to the driver, but yes, there's no, there's no vertical separation, right?
Just in the same vein, um, what about signage blocks?
So this path will be signed, yeah, it'll be a continuation of the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail.
I mean, the signage should work for motorists, if they-
Yeah, so we have, um, with Capital Roots, we've had donated multiple signs, you can kind of see some of them on the Second Avenue, um, demonstration project that was done for that over there, share the road signs, uh, bike path signs, things to that nature, so those will be placed on there as well.
Okay. Yep. So out in front of the Arsenal, the, the path is gonna move back on-road. So there's going to be, I guess, no physical separation other than pavement striping. The existing curb lines will be maintained within this area. There's no parking right now in front of the Arsenal, so we're gonna utilize all the pavement width.
Then why do that?
Why waste your money?
Why what?
Why waste your money?
With what?
With that. I ride my bike there, and what I do is I go on the sidewalk on the Arsenal side, I like to die.
That's what everybody does.
Three lanes road.
What's that?
But in front of the Arsenal, it's really three lanes wide.
Right, so what we're proposing is to reallocate that width for the cycle track and then two lanes of vehicle travel.
Why can't you go up on the grass like people already done?
Well, there's not enough room to go up on the grass clearly, and that's additional cost that, this was one area where the width is there physically now, and we need to try to maintain a budget that's feasible.
It's stripe, it's a striping exercise. This, the lanes will be reallocated and striping will be changed. There's no physical construction in this stretch, and that's part of being able to afford the project, is that as well. But then there's also the stripe median and there's a separate bike lane, uh, off to the side. So there's a lot of separation compared to what's there now. You're correct, and people do fly up this section of road, and part of this is separating that from the traffic. So if you compare now to the future, it's gonna be drastically different. But we, we're not saying there isn't an issue right now with some speed there.
And I'll let, and I'll ask you, who, what are you gonna do about all the manhole drainage, sewer drains that, uh, there is that between-
Yes.
Third Avenue cutoff to Sixteenth Street, there's gotta be fifteen drains.
There's a few of them that need to be raised to level.
All fifteen are all below surface, and some of them are wild and which bicycle tires will incur damage.
Yep, yes, no, we've noted that and the manhole covers will be raised so they're at pavement level. Um, that's a, a standard construction practice to make sure that we don't have cars diving around those or bikes.
One of the other things on Second Avenue, this, what they re-striped on Second Avenue for the same streets-
Oh, yeah, yep.
I mean, they, they attempted to hide the, or in a cover, the old yellow line, and it's a pretty core job of it, and I think it's hard to even designate which side it's on.
Because you can still see it?
Yeah, oh, I got it, it's ridiculous, the same.
Do you have a few questions? Do you have any more still thinking of the light?
Yeah, it, it does come out to you.
There's still two signal lights indicating it's two lanes.
Right. Okay, well, we'll make note of that to not-
I mean, these are little things, little things that are, you know, that come up when the contractor does it, they're going to look at it. Whoever did that, it affords trouble.
Yep, so rather than remove or uncover the striping, there's a way to remove existing striping, which we can do that.
What type of- Grinding, there's hydro water blasting, grinding, um, don't like to use any kind of sand blasting, it makes a mess, but water, hydro blasting is a way to do it, um, as well as grinding, whichever will work best.
What type of material are you gonna use to, to stripe, are you, have you just painted?
Epoxy, it's called epoxy, yep.
What's the lifespan on that?
Um, three years? It, it depends on if it's, you know, clean regularly, but three years, give or take.
So on this, on this section that you're looking at now, uh, I guess there is about a half a block or so of parking on the west side of Second Avenue.
Yep.
That obviously is not gonna change. So how does that affect the, the moving of the lanes?
Um, I guess, we can show that better up here, maybe afterwards, get up close to it, but we have the lane shift on either side of the intersections to maintain parking over this.
And where is the bike path opposite those houses at that point?
It goes, it's off-road and then it transitions to on-road in front of the Arsenal area here.
Okay.
So it, it's off-road like this segment, and then we transition back to on-road.
It's gotta be before it could lose, it, that's pretty narrow there.
Yep. Yep, I mean, I know, we don't, sorry, I didn't have that exact section here, but we can look at this after.
I think it's right after the intersection because there's the cutout there for the old bus stop that was there, so it's right after that that it jumps back onto on-road. And it is showing up on the plan on the wall, too.
Yes.
I know everybody likes their trees, but if you took those trees down to the fence, you'd have a nice clear path with the boundary that goes all the way down to the bridge.
Right.
How much more would that cost versus rerouting this, repainting this every three years, someone maintaining it and putting up signage?
So, uh, so like in this section here, you mean?
I mean, you, you can go from, you would still have to go around Passinos-
Yep.
But once you get around Passinos, you could go right up to the fence, and there's enough green space here for the curb that you could just take that out and put a bike path in on it, over the curb, over the grasses.
Yep.
And you could go from there all the way down to the bridge down here where the rice shop used to be.
Yep.
There's enough green space over there, you know, other than where we come around the police station.
Mm-hmm, which is what we tried to do, and then we scaled back budget for budget purposes, and like in this area here in front of the Arsenal, the, it's not flat, when you get to the curb, then there's an elevation change, which that poses a different issue because we can only work to that, um, right-of-way fence for 787. We can encroach on Department of Transportation property. So making the elevation difference, then we have, you know, if we're excavating down, we still have to tie back in before that right-of-way fence, which is not really feasible in this section here.
Retaining wall.
Well, without retaining wall, which is additional cost again above what we've already extended.
And the maintenance, and maintenance. We've gone on the trail, everywhere we can, we've gone on the grass, we recognize that, and we're not leaving any trees to stay on the road, that's for sure. But the areas that we are, uh, we're on the road and not is where we can't go on the grass, either for the structural integrity of 787 that has a, a structural plane that comes down at an angle, and the right-of-way fence costs the retaining walls. So we're, we're on-road the minimum amount that we can be, we're off-road as much as possible. And believe it, that's what we want, and, uh, that's, that's what's been done here. So it's all a matter of not being feasible for one reason or another, or it's a very large amount of cost, especially retaining walls, uh, next to 787, uh, would likely never get approved, uh, from the state or FHWA, as a matter of fact, they do control the interstate part of that, that, um, designation of the roadway.
Alright, continuing on from Nineteenth to Twenty-third, we, um, we're gonna be off-road pretty much right out, from right out front here to just past the bus stop, it's right outside here, and then it's gonna go off-road until the State Route Two overpass, and then it's gonna come back on-road again. So from Nineteenth to Twenty-third, we're gonna be on-road. So we're gonna utilize the existing paved area, the sidewalk, the snow storage area, and a little bit of the travel lane to include our new asphalt path and a stripe buffer. Drainage is gonna be accommodated within that stripe buffer right now, there's not a lot of curb revealed due to maybe years of pavement overlays, and we have to meet the backside of the sidewalk because there's existing houses there that have, uh, front steps, um, so those are gonna be ma, that grade is gonna be maintained. So I have this section here over there, you'll be able to see a little closer, but, uh, that's basically what we're proposing from Nineteenth to Twenty-third.
Is it go up on the curb where the sidewalk is?
We're gonna utilize the sidewalk, yes, and the area that's between the road and the sidewalk.
So, so now people, it used to be okay to walk on the sidewalk, or, or not expect flights to be there?
That area's gonna be, you can walk or ride a bike in that area. It's gonna be considered a multi-use path.
There's also parking there. Parking, there's people, very few of them are parking there now.
The, the parking that's currently on Broadway right now is, you know, for lack of a better term, illegal parking. It's parking on the sidewalk because there's no room on the street to park, so this would eliminate the parking on Broadway from, uh, the cobble, all the way down to Twenty-third Street, so there'd be no more parking in this section.
More housing is? Or what, people that live there? More housing is?
On the east side.
On the east, across the street from the, from the housing park, yep.
There's three or four people driving house there.
Yes.
What about lighting underneath that bridge area?
We've been talking with DOT about the lighting under the bridge area, we're trying to get DOT to take responsibility for that lighting. But there's, there's existing lighting there now, but may not be-
It's not operating.
It's not gonna be made yet.
There's no lighting underneath that bridge.
No.
There's a, there's a street light at the corner, uh, just, uh, north of the bridge, on the other side of the bridge, but there is no lighting underneath that bridge.
Not functional.
No, there's nothing. It's, it's not functional, it doesn't exist.
I got a question, probably more for the city. How do you get rid of snow off this thing? Where are you gonna put it? How's it gonna keep the snow that's getting plowed on the road from ending up on the bike path?
Sure, so we have a couple of different ways to be able to do that, depending on where it is, if it's on-road or off-road. Uh, first, if it's on-road, the, the regular plows will be able to get it, in the off-road sections, we have the gator, uh, that will be able to plow it off of there. I think you're probably talking more about where's the snow going to go-
Yeah.
-when you plow it. Um, there is that, um, in, in most areas, there's the, the buffer lane or the, the snow lane, if you will, for it to be placed, uh, but for the most part, it still comes off-road where it was before. But we're gonna have to do a better job of full removal of the snow along the bike path, so-
Yeah, because I live on Twenty-Fifth Street, and there's, right now, I have the snow, and we've, there's still this much space where there's no curb.
Sure.
So you can't, you know, definitely have to go ride a bicycle out there.
Jerry, you're gonna put no parking signs up there, all along the Parker Brothers', and all that? I mean, these cars park there for funerals on a regular basis, and-
Yeah, so that-
-they're just cars.
Yeah, so the, the west side of the street will still have all the, all the same parking there, the parking lots will still be available at Parker Brothers' homes across the street next to it. It's just the east side of the street right now, so if you were to drive down there right now, you might see one or two cars parked there, you know, right up to the house, because they've got the, you know, the whole passenger side of the cars on the sidewalk right now, that would be eliminated.
So you're gonna put no parking signs up, that whole area? Because it, Parker Brothers does use the east side, I'll say. They use that side of the street, I'm sure you know.
And parking is part of, of the people-
Yeah, so there, there would be no parking there, so likely there would be signs placed there that say no parking.
Good man.
Yeah.
You jumped all the way to Nineteenth to Twenty-third, how are you gonna handle this corner out here? Fifteenth Street, right outside the door, right out there.
Yep.
It's very narrow now. If you put a bicycle path, whatever the width, that ten feet plus the standoff from the cars, you don't have any room. It's not wide enough to make, for two cars to go around as it is now.
Yep.
And if you put a bike path, it's gonna be even wider.
So what we've, what we've laid out, um, we can go up to the plan sheet and show you in detail after, I guess, but what we've laid out is we've reduced the travel lane width through here a little bit, save a few feet, um, and we've also eliminated two parking spaces on the, at, right at the intersection, which are already a sight distance concern when you pull out of this intersection to take a left or a right. If somebody's parked there, you already can't see, so we've eliminated those to help kind of cut the corner, if you will, um, and we were able to continue our bike path width around the corner.
The, uh, the travel lanes width that comes, uh, from each direction on that corner are 12 feet wide. Uh, they were very wide before, now they're only gonna be 14 feet wide, so they're gonna widen right into corner to help you navigate the curve, and then getting rid of those two parking spaces there will open that up, so we can fit the 10-foot-wide lane and have 14-foot travel lanes there. So we still have a little extra room to maneuver through there, and anybody who's going 35 or below shouldn't have any trouble navigating that, uh, so-
It's a lot of bus, bus and truck traffic though, a lot of that.
Right, and, and they only need 12 feet to get through, but we have 14 available, we're doing it because we can. And then also confined by 787, there's the existing box beam guide rail on 787 that still will shield people from using the bike path, uh, if a vehicle is errant along 787. So we've made, we've been able to make it work. Uh, it's right up there, we're more than happy to show details of it to you afterward, if anybody has those questions.
Okay. Um, so I'd just like to add and share with you what our actual project schedule is. Um, we are, you know, in the design phase, there's a mandated process that we have to go through to actually get the project out to bid to a contractor. So what our schedule now is, is advertise for bids, um, in June, have construction start in August, um, we're looking at roughly a two-month construction period, and we'll do punch listing complete, um, in the fall or in October. And, um, with that, if there's any more questions, we're, um, happy to answer them now, or we can break and we'll walk up to the board and help you out.
So do we all, do you know how many parking spaces we're losing along for this bike trail?
Well-
Three by Passino-
Yep, and then-
And two by, right, right out here, but it's just five.
Just five? What about Parker Brothers?
Well, that's not parking, it's illegal parking, that doesn't, they're not supposed to be there now, so.
Who's responsible for re-striping this every three years?
City.
It's the city that'll be responsible for that.
Once this is completed, it's the city's maintenance.
How much does it cost for that for every three years?
It's about, uh, two, two, two dollars a foot. It's about two, two dollars a foot to re-stripe it, which for here, $10,000 to $15,000.
We don't expect the bike lane to be required to have three years re-striping because the traffic load on that is significantly less than the regular road. If people stay off the striped median, that won't need as much maintenance as well. So it's really is a matter of generally a centerline striping on the road, which is normal maintenance. And yes, three years is the minimum, it could be much longer than that, because it doesn't have the abuse that you see with stripes on or that are on, but with travel vehicles, with trucks and such, so it could be longer than that.
And the county, Albany County puts out a paving contract, and part of that is striping, and that's something they offer up to all municipalities, so the city could certainly say, all right, our time is now, we need to do this, and they'll hop on, and it's usually a pretty, a really good price for the contractor, because it's, they're guaranteed that work for the whole summer, and it's countywide, so that price could be less, but, but that's one avenue, rather than the city doing it with their own forces.
Cost overruns, who's gonna be responsible for that?
It would fall under the same funding split of 80, 15, 5. So 80 federal, 15 state, 5% by the city.
Jeremy, did you notice any of this project increasing our taxes in any way?
No, this, the project is 95% funded by state and federal, so.
75% is a lot, huh?
Yeah, that's 66.
That's the way the guys that gave their whole life and career to the city, and you're taking benefits away from them.
We're talking about the bike path.
Yeah, but, you know.
Yeah, part of the.
They're so broke, we're losing benefits that were promised to us when we said we would work for the city, when we had turned a job down.
With cost overruns, just to elaborate on that, who asked that question?
Oh, yeah.
Generally with federally funded projects, if your construction costs go up to about 10% more than the bid amount for any unforeseen things, you know, we take, we go to adjust a manual cover, and we take it apart, it crumbles to nothing, we can put in to have that replaced under the project. When you get up to about 8 or 9, 10%, there really is no question on it that they'll cover that additional money. We're at $1 million for construction, so that's $100,000. And that $1 million already includes a field change payment that's built in for overruns already in the cost of that. So there's about 15% above and beyond what's actually needed put in for cost overruns or things that are unforeseen, especially, especially when you're adjusting manual covers in the city. So how much cost does this most of the cost?
1.32 million, 1.32 million.
So just do this temporary thing for how many years before they start moving the other side?
This is not temporary, this is.
It was, it was called the.
It's not a demonstration.
It was called the short-term alternative, but that was what it was called in the early planning stages, but once this is built, it's a permanent facility.
So you're not gonna try and go to the other side, the east side of 787 at all?
Well, we are not as part of this project, that I think is a long-range vision, a bigger idea, but there is no funding in place for that, that I'm aware of, Jeremy.
That project is a pipe dream right now, hopefully becomes true, but it's at a very high-level planning stage, it could be 10, it could be 20 years before that's realized, let's be realistic.
Yeah, that's a multimillion-dollar project that will take years and years, even if it ever gets the funding, there's permits with various environmental agencies, there's shoring walls that just need to be built in the river, that's, that's a big, big plan.
I guess we were just confused with the short-term, long-term, it's basically a long-term, are you just gonna do it?
Short-term meaning it can be accomplished within five or less years, long-term meaning it's 15 years or longer, so.
Yeah, it was just the terminology.
That's why I consider it the short-term.
Well, I was never a big fan of moving the city east over here, side of 787 anyway, because our object here is, we want bikers to come through our city.
Sure.
And stop at Stewart's, we want them to stop at, you know, Max, that's what we want. We don't want, we don't want to take them completely out of order, but, you know, I go like up to Serato every year, and I stop and get pizza, one spot of still water, and stuff like that, and I think that's what we want. We don't want to push people to the river, we want them riding their bike from Ravina and stopping at Max for a hamburger, or stopping at Stewart's for a shake.
Sure.
That's what I was hoping we want.
Yep. Agreed.
I just wanted to point out that if you really want to connect this to the rest of the bike path, you know, if that's part of the objective, you really have to run this up to 25th Street, okay, because that's where, if you make a right there and head towards Green Island, that's where the signs for the bike path pick up. So I'm just wondering if you can, can that be booked at?
Well, the goal, the objective of this project was to connect to Hudson Shores Park, and then the eventual Green Island connection of, well, this is part of the Empire State Trail, and Green Island, the Black Bridge, over to Cohoes, that's the continuation.
And can you get there from Hudson Shores Park?
Right, but we need a termination point as part of this project, which is Hudson Shores Park, there's a parking area there, there's a way to get to this facility.
I don't think you want to be the guys that send people across that 787 into ramps, Hudson Shores Park, I don't think you want that as, you know.
Part of your game.
That is, that is the most dangerous part of all of this, to try and cross those ramps. I wouldn't even walk across those, okay, unless you're gonna do something to control the traffic better there, you're just setting people up to get in on 23rd Street, that is sure available, that's why I'm glad you're on this side of the river, so I would like to come out of Hudson Shores Park and try and get home, like all the way west, okay, so I'm glad it's on the west side of 787.
Yep.
And being safer, but, I mean, trying to hit Hudson Shores Park from Second Avenue, I would not try it.
To further clarify what Dan's talking about, the bicycle master plan within there was the connection to Hudson Shores Park. The new Mohawk Hudson Bike Trail does end in Waterbly at 25th Street, and then heads into Green Island, and actually also continues into Cohoes and then connects to the Mohawk Trail, which is west.
Right, so that's a safer way to go.
Correct, so the Empire State Trails has provided us with signage and striping for the 25th Street-Broadway intersection from there, but this particular project takes us to 23rd Street. So from 23rd Street to 25th is going to be, will just be shared roadway, there's no other way to be able to connect this, so it'll be a shared roadway with signage at 25th Street pointing into Green Island to stay on the Hudson Trail. We've been working with the Town of Colony and with Cohoes to extend it all the way down Second Avenue to continue to Mohawk Paper and go up the hill to connect to the beginnings of that. So if you've ever watched the marathon that runs, they come down the Snake Hill by Mohawk Paper and then come this way on Route 32. Again, very dangerous in that section, so we'll be connecting to that as well, but we have to work with Colony and Cohoes to complete that.
First, a comment that I commend the city for, one, taking care of this project, and two, say it's gonna be plowed during winter, many, most, almost all bike paths are not, so I appreciate that greatly. Second, do we know how many trees are actually going to be removed, and if they're going to be replaced, and roots by the, growing by the path and damaging the asphalt, and I run the path in Manazalot, and it's becoming more of an issue?
Yep, what was the count of the trees? Twelve? I don't remember off the top, I can't quote the other. I think it was around, it was around 12.
12.
It was around the dozen mark.
Being removed or sold?
Yeah, for the various reasons that you just mentioned, that once asphalt is paved and it's in the root base of the tree, that tree will eventually die anyway, so.
Are any of them being replaced?
Yes, we will be replacing some trees where we can, but not all of them, but yes, there will be a planting plan as part of the project.
Is the removal going to increase sound? Again, running the bike path in Manazalot, in areas where there's not a whole lot of trees, if it rains, it's extremely noisy.
Okay.
And you can't hear. Is removing the trees going to affect that at all, especially for the neighbors in that area?
You're saying from the rain?
Yes.
Oh.
Particularly in the rain, it gets very loud.
787?
Especially with people driving on 787.
Oh, yeah, no, the trees will have absolutely no effect on that at all. You need about 50 feet thick of trees to get a 3 to 4 decibel reduction from a high from road noise. So actually, it won't have any, it won't be any change at all, even if we put a row of 150, 200 trees in a section there, it still wouldn't do anything unfortunately. It's, but it's a nice visual block, but we'll put trees back in certain clumping locations just physically to help with that, but the noise won't change at all, and I know exactly what you're talking about, it's, it's pretty loud.
Can I ask a question on, you said construction, the road surface where you're actually on the road that exists now, just making a lane, are they gonna rip it up, putting pavement down?
We are not doing that as part of this project.
Because from 14th Street to 23rd Street, it's horrible. All you're doing is putting a white line next to holes, and when I say holes, I mean holes, it's horrible. And back to the tree issue, when you plant, if there's trees next to the bike path, the asphalt, within two years, the roots are coming up.
Yeah.
Through the asphalt.
Yes.
Now you have bumps, and like Amanda said, if you go down on Hudson Mohawk, or Mohawk Hudson, whichever way you want to list it, it's just a washboard, because the roots are pushed up blacktop, and in two years, it's gonna happen here if you put trees next to it, and who's gonna repair it then?
No, that's why we're removing trees, is for that various reason, if we replant them, it will not be.
Your design shows going around trees.
So, yeah.
Most trees, the root system want oxygen, so they push up, and you push the blacktop up, and that's the problem with trees next to bike paths. City's responsible for the repair, and we got a problem there, so.
Is there a standard distance between a tree and the sidewalk, or the tree and the asphalt that go by?
It's called the, it's called a drip line, so where the edge of the canopy, I guess, of the tree is, if you're within that area, that's where you would want to remove it.
This year, the tree is this big, and five years, the tree is this big.
Well, then.
So I was wondering, does it go by, to make it a tree?
Definitely.
Certain trees, yeah.
Yes.
Or does it go by, well, all right, here's a drip edge, and then a Naples, this big, and an old six big, and, so I was just wondering, is there a standard, the drip edge of the tree is the standard?
Yep.
We also have a design base underneath the trail that allows the roots to go through and not disturb the asphalt. It's called structural soil, and if we're, if we're close, we have it in the contract, and when it's being constructed, if we're close to a mass of roots, we'll use that type of material underneath the path. They get plenty of oxygen that way, the stone has about 35% air void in it, so it's, there's a lot of oxygen down there, and that's, the tree roots can pass through that without disturbing the asphalt. And we can also cut the tree roots off by putting shields in the ground to keep the tree roots from doing that, and they'll migrate to other places. Like pine trees have taproots, they don't spread out very much. Down by the city of Albany, down through that area, we've got a lot of will trees, it's all will trees, the roots go like crazy, and they destroy everything, they soak up the water and grow like crazy, so you're right, that's what's happening down there, that's not gonna happen here, though.
Can I have that in a written guarantee?
See you after class.
I will.
So this question, I guess, is either for Jeremy or you guys, but is this, is this path the way that you designed it, written stone, or are you open to suggestions, or, I mean, if you, I understand you want to get to go over to, you know, the 23rd Street lights, you know, the parking area that's over there now.
Yep.
But if you were to come up 23rd, or, I'm sorry, come up 13th Street where the firehouse is, and use the existing bike trail that you just put in, and continue it all the way down to 23rd Street, across from Stewart's, that big area right there, you could make a parking spot where that goes from there to the canal system, there's a big grass area right there, you could put a parking area in right there, and then when you do continue it, you know, you'd be right there. I think trying to shoot everything over to the, to the park by the river with the safety and everything else to get everybody over there, you've already got an existing trail that's on this side that they put in for a temporary trial, if you continued that same pattern all the way down through, it wouldn't be so much in the pattern, off the pattern, in the pattern, off the pattern, where cars can go fast, they've got a wide spot, and now they gotta slow down, it would be from the firehouse all the way through the city, one link, you know, one whole pattern.
So to answer your question, it is not completely written in stone yet, any, anything that's brought up today, or as we move forward to finalize this and go out to bid, you know, there could still be changes to the, to the structure of this. To change the entire route, that, that won't happen, again, extensive amount of studies have been done on this and put together to identify this as the path. This is also the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail, and so it is determined where that trail is, and the Empire State Trail, so this, this trail has already been determined that this is where it runs, so it will stay in this path, what, you know, what the options are moving from 4th Street to 23rd Street or 25th Street, they could change between now and then slightly, but this is, this is the proposed final project.
Regards to the safety issue that we're discussing, is there anything that we could add to, to make it more safe, maybe flashing lights, or, that should be crossing sign, I'm not sure, like, what's at your disposal, but is there any way that we could supplement it?
Yeah, any, any type of increased safety, and again, that's why this project was put together, is because the massive amount of increased safety from, from what's being proposed today as compared to what it was with the bicycle master plan at the, at the 4th Street, 23rd Street terminus on both sides, being on-road and crossing over, so safety is the, is the biggest key to this, so we continue to look at any, any modifications for further safety on it, so.
And while I have some of the floor, going back to the trees, can you kind of outline where those trees would be missed? I guess my concern is that the stretch of Broadway right from the Arsenal is a very pretty street for the city, being tree-lined, and I think it provides a nice aesthetic buffer from 787. If we start chopping down trees down from there, is that not observed?
Yeah, so that's an on-road portion of it, so there's no, there's no trees being looked at there to be taken down, it's mostly south of there, where it's in the off-road portion, and they're kind of scattered throughout certain areas.
And then there's a building further down past the Arsenal that's vacant, and I think it just reflects poorly on the city, if we're, we're kind of promoting traffic through the city with this bike path to go to ice cream shops and the playground there and whatnot, I think that maybe it would be a good time to kind of talk about that as well. I think it's for sale for $5,000, I don't know who the owner is, or, I mean, I can't speak to that, but.
Does the land bank own it?
Yeah, it's, the land being over $5,000, I think that, you know, I've been sitting there for a couple of years now, maybe it's a good time to, to consider what we should do with that, because it's a nice order, people are gonna be riding up their bike coming through Waterbly saying, what the hell?
Yeah, so the land bank owns it, I know there's people that are interested in that property, I've been in touch with the land bank, we can't really assist in any brokering of a deal between private and, you know, private sale of a property, but we certainly are pushing for all the vacant properties to be filled. The other, the other main thing with, again, a bike path, as Mark pointed out, running through the city, is, you know, the economic development impacts of having the bike path here, and so there are some vacancies along that, that strip, and by having this in there, it definitely becomes more advantageous for somebody to scoop up those properties and to do something with, the old Papa's being one of those, you know, to have these close to there, if somebody scoops up Papa's and does something, we put bike path there, it's another place for people to stop, so, there's a lot of options by doing this, so it definitely helps out in the economic development, and with the city working on an economic development study over the next year, all of that will have impacts on, on what happens to those properties.
So getting back to those, I know the 787 ramps, I've attempted to.
Yeah, 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 if we can find a way to avoid those, believe me, we will, we've been, we've been trying everything.
What's the legal?
What's the legal, who has the right of way? Does a person pushing a bicycle have the right of way over a vehicle?
Pedestrian in a crosswalk has the right of way.
Now, is a person riding a bicycle a pedestrian?
Yes.
They are.
You're not supposed to ride first, I would just walk.
Are we really any attempt by the Waterbleed police department to enforce these laws? Because I know even on Nineteenth Street, if you attempt to walk across a crosswalk, you better be able to run because people don't stop. And I've never seen a police officer or Waterbleed, you're remotely concerned with pedestrian or bicycle safety.
All things that need to be shored up and addressed.
Just to touch on the winner thing, I would be so concerned of plowing because your feeder is the bike trail and that's not plowed now. So it's kind of like, you know, we all put our bikes away pretty much December.
But it would be nice to have something. It would be nice to have something.
You know what, maybe try selling it as a snowshoe. Because, gee, that trail right now is all carpet.
Are you going to snowshoe the work? We'll clear it so you can. Maybe people come and park and then just ride around Waterbleed. You know, since it is clear.
They can't park because you said park your hands.
Jeremy, the second half of bike path, that only goes up to what, Sixteenth Street?
Yeah, right now that goes up to Sixteenth Street, so just to give a quick idea, again, in the intra-city connections portion of the bicycle master plan, we talked about to have bike lanes on Second Avenue connecting Thirteenth Street to Twenty-Sixth Street. So what we did over there, again, that's a demonstration project to show what it would look like to have the bike lanes there and how they would continue. Between Sixteenth Street and Twenty-Third Street in that area, very difficult because of the intersections, signalized intersections, left-turn lanes. There are engineers that are working on that as well, but this was a, a temporary demonstration project to show what it would look like so that people can see it, get used to it, give some feedback, but based on the, the master plan that the council adopted was to place bike lanes from Thirteenth all the way to Twenty-Sixth, so it is a possibility for that to be fully continued through.
The problem, I see the gentleman that said bring it up past the firehouse and down Second Avenue, when you hit Nineteenth Street, that's a problem. You know, that's why I like Broadway to maybe Twenty-first Street, and then if I had Twenty-first, you could extend it down, that would be fabulous, but...
Yeah, that was kind of, you know, I mean, for a couple of different reasons, but to hop off of Broadway to get up to Second Avenue and back down certainly didn't make sense, but if you could take Broadway as far as you can, and then there is an intra-city connection at Twenty-first Street and actually at Nineteenth Street at the Congress Street Bridge, there was some study done of connecting right there, being able to get over the bridge, continue down, go west up Nineteenth Street, things like that. You know, one thing that we face in this city, obviously, and we all know we have tight streets, not a lot of, well, we have a lot of vehicles because it's a bedroom community where, you know, it's mostly residential, so creating bike lanes and things like that on our streets is very, very difficult to do. You know, one thing that we should all keep in mind as we take a look at this, the original plan, rather than taking away parking on, on either end, was on-road travel for cyclists. So riding on the road and then right at the Congress Street Bridge and right at the wood-burning warehouse there, crossing back over Broadway to get back onto the cycle track. So we'd have, you know, four points where you'd be crossing Broadway to be able to get to the cycle track and the danger and the lack of safety in that is what these three gentlemen were tasked with trying to accomplish and that's how they came up with this. So a lot of times and a lot of the questions and concerns are, are the give and take of it. If we want to, if we want to be as safe as possible, this what, this what's the result? If we, you know, if we want to maintain every parking space that we have, this is the result. So what you see up on, on the wall up there is, is a result of taking in all those ideas, putting it together and trying to come up with the best possible option for safety and to get people from Fourth Street to Twenty-Third Street within the city. Again, the economic impacts that it could have.
Thank you. Okay. Is there enough room from, from the bridge up to Twenty-Third to just stay on the road and use where people are parking now and just use that as a bike path versus? My, my only concern is you've got cars that expect you to be in the road, then they don't, then they do, then they don't. And if you were to, you know, be able to go from the police station here and go all the way up through there and have a bike lane that's committed to it, you could temporarily put those tubes in for one year just to kind of initiate, this is where the trail is, and not be up on people's sidewalks, back down, up, back down. I just think that it might be a little easier if you had room to re-lane it.
So the, the current conditions of the road don't allow for it to be on-road that way, which is why it was designed this way?
Does it make much sense for me?
You do have to keep in mind that putting pedestrians and bicyclists in the same location is probably more dangerous than automobile and bicycle. It's relatively much different between somebody walking, somebody bicycling at twenty miles an hour and somebody walking at three miles an hour, that, that's a twenty times difference in speed as opposed to somebody driving thirty and somebody bicycling at twenty. You know, the relative speeds are much closer there, you know, that reduces the chance for an accident.
Sure.
So putting bicycles and pedestrians in the same space is always kind of risky.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's something that's done throughout where they put bike and pet together. A lot of these committees and, and action committees that do it are bike pet committees and they do it together. That's one of the main reasons why this is designed to be on the east side of the street because on the west side of Broadway is where the pedestrian access is. That's where the good sidewalks are, as was mentioned before. You know, one gentleman rides his bike in front of the Arsenal on the sidewalk because it's there. So that's where you would walk, you would walk on the west side, you would ride on, on the east side. And of course, we have a section, about a four-block section where it's not possible, it has to be shared one way or the other, and that was, that was definitely the biggest challenge in putting this together, was figuring out what to do from the Congress Street Bridge to Twenty-Third Street. We looked at multiple different options there, trying to get back behind, which was designed in the, in the master plan, but not feasible because there's actually not room there and it's not city lands anyway. It would basically be riding along seven eighty-seven, which is not acceptable from DOT. So in that one section, that's where we, we have that, where it is bike pet together. So we understand the concern and again, it comes back to that give and take, what would we be willing to give up for that? Yes, sir?
Just a comment, I don't know if there's room in the budget or if we can justify it to the DOT, but I think this turn right up here, it's probably the most dangerous point where someone could hop a curve and maybe there's a way that you could have a barrier just for peace of mind, especially as a biker just going around that. And, and also just for people getting used to the, the new traffic pattern.
Yeah? Do you mean a barrier separating the bikes and the cars?
Right.
Physical. Yeah, you're familiar with what's called an impact attenuator? It's what you see at the end of a run of concrete, that, all the cushions and the barrels. We have to put those on the street if we put any kind of barrier up there. And that's where it becomes difficult because that is a hazard for the motor vehicles as well as the bicyclists as well, running into a blunt end. So why, it would be great if we could, we could just put a barrier in some locations, we have to deal with that end, the ends of that becoming a new dangerous situation as well. So that's part of why DOT likely would not allow it, usually doesn't, because of that aspect of it. And the feds provide eighty percent of the money and it's in their criteria that you avoid those at all as much as you possibly can. So that's what we're up against too, but point is very well taken about physical barrier there in tight locations. And we are stretching it as far away as we can and we get more people room to maneuver and they'll stay in the lane better. That's our, our best case situation for that location.
I think, I think he, you're in different directions there. I think he just wants some temporary candlesticks until people get used to the bike path being there, not a physical barrier, a, a small barrier, you know, not a...
Maybe that's an area for candlesticks and you can decide to, decide to, the, the right outside of the police station, so I think that would be set.
Yeah.
Good point. Well, we'll still be here for, for a few more minutes if anybody has any other questions or any private questions that they want to ask. Again, it's up on the, on the wall over here, take a look. We'll stick around for a little bit if you have any more questions or comments. Thank you again all for coming and braving the, the cold and the wind out there. Be safe getting home. We also have comment sheets as well. If you don't feel like you're speaking up, you can write one down and send it in. Please sign in as well. I think most of you did, but if you didn't, uh...